Did you figure this out, Kevin? How you're gonna get me up on the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as you open your mouth, I'll switch over.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. This meeting is called at order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. In accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of October 6, 2025, was published in the Courier-News and Star-Ledger and placed on the Borough's website and bulletin board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public, and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Gallagher is excused this evening. Council members: Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glenn Dunne.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Verne.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes September 15? So moved.
Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. We have no departmental reports or notices. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Auto Group, providing us with some economic insight and market analysis as we begin to look at our master plan and where we're headed as we, as we just start to have these discussions with our different, with the planning board and the groups that, environmental and recreation and all of our stakeholders. Mr. Driver, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to use a microphone because I think my voice will carry, but we've got Mr. Jeff Otto of the Auto Group. He started it. He's the chief economist, and we last had him here in 2017, and he gave us guidance moving forward with our master plan in those days. And because of the climate, the economy, and a number of other things, we've invited him back, and I hope you enjoy and take note of what he's got to tell you. Thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me. We certainly find ourselves in very interesting times and changes all around us. My prepared comments here tonight are to discuss the intersection between the economy, real estate markets, and redevelopment trends. And I invite you to interrupt me or ask questions as we go along because that's usually where the most important learning happens. Just in terms of background, my company provides a range of services as it relates to the real estate economy. Those services include providing redevelopment guidance to municipalities and developers alike, providing financial analysis as to the need or justification or structure of financial agreements surrounding pilots, providing risk guidance to commercial banks here in New Jersey to help them to understand the risk landscape in terms of lending on existing real estate property as well as new construction projects, and also valuation services. The topics that I'm going to talk to you about here today, we'll start with the economy because the economy, did we lose screen here? Yeah. Because the economy really is the underpinning for everything that happens in real estate markets and in redevelopment. Next, I'll speak to you about some very troubling trends with New Jersey's demographics, which bear very close watching, and suggest that housing demand in the not-too-distant future will begin to decline steadily, heading out beginning in about five years and, and evolving beyond that point. Then, some discussion of what's happening in real estate markets with a focus, or at least a highlight, as to how some of the real estate sectors are performing here in Somerville and what that tells us about the future. And then finally, a forecast as to what's likely to play out in the coming years and beyond as it relates to development, redevelopment, and real estate. Starting, and I'm going to move pretty quickly through many of these slides because I know you're an informed group, and I don't want to make, have this take longer than it needs to. First, we've now come through a period of high interest rates. They're not the highest interest rates that we've seen in history, but they've been significantly elevated from what they were prior to the pandemic, and that's really the baseline here to look at what was happening in 2017 and 18 and 19 because those were pre-pandemic times. And then since then, we've had a series of distortions which are now finally coming to an end. Putting aside the profound and devastating health impacts of the pandemic, and I don't mean in any way to downplay that, but I'm here to talk to you about economic impacts. The bottom line is that the federal government reacted, overreacted to what played out during the pandemic and overstimulated the economy in order to attempt to avoid a worst-case economic meltdown scenario. There's nothing political in that because there were two presidential administrations that had a hand in that, both the first Trump presidency and the Biden administration. And to be fair, it would, would have been near impossible to know how much was enough during that time period. It was truly a frightening time, again, setting aside the health aspects. Beginning in March of 2020, 22 million Americans lost their jobs in five and a half weeks. We never had seen anything like that. It was worse than the Great Depression. It was an all-hands-on-deck moment, and the federal government began to put as much stimulus into the economy as they could with various mechanisms, one of them being to push interest rates to 0%. And we know today that what was done was more than was needed, and that's how we ended up with inflation. And in higher inflation brings higher interest rates. They are sort of joined at the hip, and that's how we got to this period of high interest rates that we've just come through and are finally beginning to see settle down. What we have now is an economy which has normalized. We're seeing inflation in a more tolerable level, 2.5% to 3%, that's something that the economy can handle. It sort of paves the way for the Federal Reserve to be able to take the foot off the brake on the economy and allow interest rates to continue to settle down. There's a lot of controversy and disagreement on that, but that is what's likely to happen next. And with that, we're going to now move into a more normal, stabilized economic pattern heading forward for real estate investment, development, and redevelopment. The economy is doing quite well. We have a growth rate in the economy as recently as the second quarter of this year, the most recently completed quarter, where the economy is growing at nearly 4% despite plenty of predictions that it was going to collapse. It's not hap, it did not happen in the second quarter. And in the third quarter, which is about, which has just come to a close, the preliminary reading is that the economy continues to grow at nearly 4%. So the economy is doing quite well. When we look at the inflation front, which is the determinant for interest rates, the primary determinant of interest rates is inflation, and the reason for that is that when a bank or any other entity lends money to be paid back in the future, inflation causes the money to be paid back at the end of the loan term to be worth less than the money that was originally lent because you can't buy as much with your dollar if inflation has made everything more expensive. And interest rates, in part, make the lender whole to account for the inflation, the deflationary effects on a dollar's purchasing power due to rising prices. We're, we're doing quite well there. We were up as high as 9%. We're, we've been hovering in the 2.5% to 3% range now for nearly a year, and all indications are that inflation will not spike going forward and that, as a result, interest rates will decline. Despite that decline in interest rates, which you see here with the blue-shaded graph, we've not seen yet a corresponding decline in interest rates, which is taking a very heavy toll on moderate and low-income households across the country and specifically here in New Jersey. High interest rates really don't have much of an effect on more affluent and wealthy households because they tend to buy more with cash, they're less dependent on credit, and they're better able to afford. We've not seen yet that interest rates, the drop in the blue line in inflation, have been matched by what's happened with interest rates, but that's what's likely to come next and with that, a more normalized redevelopment landscape. The reasons why it is unlikely that inflation will spike again and therefore cause interest rates to remain elevated is that job creation has slowed dramatically and unemployment claim filings have risen dramatically. Incidentally, I might tell you that when the Federal Reserve starts to raise interest rates, having people lose their jobs and having the unemployment rate go higher is, is exactly their intent. They're looking to stop businesses from hiring, stop consumers from spending, and getting that reset in the economy so inflation cools off and interest rates can decline. And on that front, it's been mission accomplished. We've gone from adding 300,000 or 400,000 jobs a month nationally to adding very few recently. Unemployment claims are, are rising, and here in New Jersey, we've actually had job losses in four of the last seven months. These are not alarming to the extent that we're on the edge or the precipice of a collapse in the economy, but they are indications that hiring has slowed, wage growth will be less, that means that spending will throttle back, and inflation will normalize. Other reasons why it is unlikely that we'll see a, a further spike in inflation is that oil prices, which feed into the price of just about everything that we consume, have been steadily declining this year. We are seeing that home prices around the country have stabilized and are barely rising at all. We've gone from home price increases of 18% a few years ago nationally to today, prices rising at only about 2%. And in half of all U.S. housing markets, home prices are now declining. That is not because of a fundamental collapse in the housing market, it's because prices overappreciated in recent years, and there needs to be some normalization of that. Now, prices are not declining in New Jersey. Prices are still rising, although at a slower pace, and home prices, home selling prices in Somerville are rising at more than double the pace of what's occurring here in New Jersey. So, home prices falling in half of the markets in the country. Nationally, the average rise is 2%. In New Jersey, it's about double that. Home prices are going up by 5%. And in Somerville, by more than 12% so far this year. That is a testament to the forward vision that Somerville has exhibited here for a couple of decades now in terms of placemaking, in terms of seeing this as more than just about housing, but also about the desirability of your local economy and real estate landscape. And we'll see some numbers on that in a little bit. I would point out that home prices account for 40% of the core inflation reading. Whoops, let me just go back here. Home prices account for 40% of the core inflation reading, another reason why inflation is likely to continue to drift downward going forward. I'm going to skip this slide because it gets a little political. Let me just sum it up this way. Tariffs are not a significant contributor to inflation, and the Federal Reserve has, and I'm not being critical, has held back on lowering interest rates as much as the inflation rate has dropped because of concerns about tariffs, but the, but the plain facts of tariffs, both looking backwards and forwards, are that they tend to be non-inflationary because only about 1/10th of 1% of a tariff ends up getting passed on to consumers. And so that's another reason why we do expect that interest rates will continue to fall. I want to talk next about demographics. We are in the midst of some very troubling trends here in New Jersey, and it does raise questions about the long-term viability of apartment development. Now, that's not to say that the apartments that have been built already will, will collapse or will fail to be profitable, but it does suggest that we're approaching a point in time where less would be better than the pace at which we've seen apartments develop in the past. We'll start here. When we take a look at the outbound movement of New Jersey households leaving New Jersey to move to another state, the numbers continue to be extremely high. We are experiencing a net loss of New Jersey households due to outmigration in the range of 70,000 or 80,000 a year. That's the net loss of households. Now, certainly, the population is continuing to rise, although very modestly, but the reason it's rising primarily is because of foreign immigration, not because of domestic migration. What we're looking at here are people moving from one state to another. New Jersey has the highest outbound migration rate in the country. A recent study by the moving industry, companies who help people to move their household goods from one place to another, estimated that in New Jersey, when somebody, someone puts their household goods onto a moving truck, 65% of the time, it's leaving the state. And we are seeing significant losses in household population, household formation, and the number of households in our state because it's become a very expensive place to be able to afford to live. When we take a look inside the numbers, here's where it gets particularly alarming. Different from trends in the past, where the largest element, largest segment of people leaving New Jersey were people moving into retirement, senior households, at which point in time their income declines and they find that they need to go somewhere else to be able to afford to live the longer life expectancies that we have today, those numbers have completely turned around. And in 2024, only 21%, let's call it 1 in 5, of the households who left New Jersey were senior households. Four out of five households were households in their 20s and 30s and 40s who were leaving by choice. This is a significant change from what we were experiencing in the past. The second element here which is concerning is that the largest slice of people leaving New Jersey, now remember, 80% are in their prime working years, and of the people who were leaving, more than half are in the highest income level in the state with salaries in excess of $150,000. So what's changed over the last few years is that the people, the profile of those leaving New Jersey has shifted from being seniors on fixed incomes to being younger-age workers in their prime working years who can afford to stay but are choosing to leave. This is very concerning. This is a byproduct of high taxes, high costs of living, high cost of housing, and it's not going to go away without significant policy intervention at the state level. Even more concerning is that a poll by Monmouth University in 2024 found that half, 48% of all the households in New Jersey were planning to leave within the next five to 10 years, and the highest cohort of people planning to leave are those between 18 and 34 years of age, and those are your apartment dwellers in the largest numbers. So we have much concern about this, and the expectation is that we're going to see less population, less demand, less workforce, less housing demand in that 18 to 34-year category going forward. Now, this is not entirely unique to New Jersey. It is happening in coastal markets, the most expensive places to live in this country, and it's a concern. Now, next, we need, I'm going to layer on top of this sort of another trend, which is the trend for declining birth rates here in New Jersey, in the United States, around the world. And starting about 25 years ago, birth rates started to fall precipitously. That continues to occur today. And something that school districts understand well, the concept of cohort aging, that when you're trying, when you're wanting to project school enrollments in a particular grade and you're looking forward five years later to say, well, how many 10th graders will we have five years from now based upon how many 5th graders we have today, cohort aging? This precipitous drop in birth rates in New Jersey particularly is manifesting in fewer young adults now 25 years later. So we have two factors. We have young adults leaving New Jersey because it's hard to afford to stay here and get ahead, and we have fewer children being born, which, if you have a drop in birth rates today, 20 years later, there'll be fewer 20-year-olds, cohort aging. So we're seeing this significantly, and we look at, when we look at the trends, and we're going to sort of dial this into Somerville in a moment, when we look at the trends, you know, the population of 15- to 19-year-olds has declined by nearly half compared to what it was just 10 years ago. This manifests in public school enrollments. This manifests in workforce, people entering the workforce, and whether a company can find the talent that it needs and wants to be able to continue to locate in a place. This manifests in reduced housing demand as those young people create that drop in the population of 20-year-olds and 30-year-olds. Now, when we take a look at this, just want to get past this, when we take a look at this in terms of population by age cohort, what you see over here on the left is New Jersey and what you see here on the right is Somerville. And what I'd like to, to focus in on with you is that in New Jersey, on the left, 12.5% of the population is between the ages of 35 and 44, but in New Jer, in Somerville, that jumps to nearly 19%. That is a direct result of the redevelopment efforts that have gone on here downtown, which have created both purchase and rental housing, a significant part of that being the rental housing market, that young people find this to be a vibrant and desirable place to live in. And so there are, there is the success firsthand and the demand for the apartment product, projects, communities that have been built here in your town. But when you look to the left of that, you can see very low numbers of people coming up in the 10- to 14, 15- to 19, 20- to 24-year-old age cohorts, which means that in order for the existing apartment properties to continue to be successful, and they are very successful here in Somerville, more successful than at the state level, in order for that to continue and in order for future younger-age households to want to come to live in Somerville so that additional development can happen, you'll, you'll need to continue to engage in creative placemaking here and have a very, a forward vision on the things that will make Somerville a place of choice for younger-age households going forward. And I talk a lot about younger-age households, but they are the driver for everything. If younger-age households aren't moving into a, into a place, the retail businesses starve, they die, they fail. If younger-age households are not coming in to move into modern amenitized apartments, older-age families, households that have a house that they want to sell because they want to move on in their lives, they don't have someone to sell it to. And so placem, the placement, while the placemaking that you've done has been successful, there'll need to be more of it going forward because the challenges will remain. Here's some startling numbers. Here in New Jersey today, 72% of all households are childless, and in Somerville, it's 74%. 74% of all housing units, whether it's a home, an apartment, a townhome, a condominium, a group home, 74%, three out of every four households have no children. That's the result of those birth rate declines that I was talking about earlier, and it is why apartment living, one of the reasons why apartment living has become so popular here in our state, because if it's only one or two persons living together in a household, you don't really have a need. You may have a want, but you don't really have a need for a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom house. And so these are concerning numbers, and there's no sign that it will change going forward. By our projections, within a 25-mile radius of New York City, and we're just on the cusp of that here as the crow flies, there will be a decline of 112,000 households between the ages of 25 and 34 five years from now. And those are your apartment dwellers. And so we need to think carefully about future development here and how much will be sustainable and also how creative you'll need to be in terms of continuing to engage in the placemaking that you've done to this point. Now, certainly, the immigrant population is a significant driver of housing demand in New Jersey, and you can see here that New Jersey has a much higher immigrant population than exists nationally. 24% of all households in New Jersey were foreign-born compared to only 14% nationally. But when we take a look at the income profile of those households living in New Jersey who immigrated here from another country, they are, with the exception of those originating from India, which have the highest household income in New Jersey, the other, other countries of origin, people who've come from other places, are challenged economically. They have much lower income levels. They work in jobs that don't pay as much money and can't afford the price and cost of housing in Somerville and in other places. And so we do need to focus on certainly providing affordable housing for foreign-born households and all households who are challenged, but the redevelopment that we see going on with top-of-the-market rents and the very high housing prices in Somerville, which are appreciating faster than the rest of the state, those are not affordable to the vast majority of immigrant households, and that makes these demographic trends all the more significant. I want to talk a little bit about the for-sale housing market next. We are in the process of transitioning to what we would describe as a more balanced housing market, and that's a housing market where most houses sell for less than asking price rather than more than asking price. That shift has already happened, and it will continue to play out going forward as buyers take more and more control of negotiating selling prices for housing. And so this transition, this resetting of the market is something that we'll see play out. Interest rates remain pretty high here, and you can see here, the blue is showing you the drop in inflation, which should have triggered a corresponding drop in interest rates, but the red line is the 30-year fixed-rate mortgage. We've not seen it yet, but it is coming, and we are going to see that over the next couple of years. We have seen a very modest decline in 30-year fixed-rate mortgage rates from about 7.8% to 6.3%, which has essentially put about 70,000 of purchasing power into a first-time buyer's pocket. In other words, if you buy a house today with interest rates low, only 1.5 percentage points lower than they were before, it's the equivalent to you of paying 70,000 less for the same house, or you can afford to spend 70,000 more without any increase in your monthly housing expense. And so what we expect to see happen next is that there will be this recovery in the number of home sales occurring in New Jersey. I should say that while home prices have done very well, we're only selling about half as many homes as we used to sell in New Jersey, and that's principally half as many homes as we used to sell in New Jersey, and that's principally because high interest rates have distorted the market where the vast majority of home buyers, particularly first-time buyers, starter home buyers, have not been able to afford with the elevated interest rates. Once again, that is precisely the Federal Reserve's intent when they start to, to raise interest rates. I'm going to skip through this because, and just move to the point that we're now seeing that the number of houses on the market is now steadily increasing. Did we lose screen there? There it is. We're seeing that the number of houses are increasing steadily, those that are on the market. This is that indicator that we're heading to a more balanced time in the housing market. A year ago, three out of every four homes was selling for more than asking price, because there was nothing else for buyers to be able to choose from. Today, we're seeing that only about one in three houses are selling for more than asking price, two in three are selling for less than asking price, and we expect to see this inventory climb and home price increases slow dramatically going forward. Now, on, on, on the subject of home prices, home prices in New Jersey are rising right now at a five percent pace in two thousand and twenty-five, down significantly from where they were rising five years ago during the pandemic. That was quite unprecedented. Normally, when there's an economic crisis, home prices decline. This time, we saw home prices rise dramatically, and we slowed now to five percent, which is the long-term seventy-five-year average here in New Jersey, and we expect this to be less and less in the coming years, with the strong possibility of interest, of home price declines, starting in three or four years from now. Nothing dramatic, but haircuts in home prices, we expect to see a few years out. On the affordability front, we can see that statewide in New Jersey, someone earning median income can, only has sixty-nine percent of the income needed to be able to qualify to buy a first, a median-priced house. In Somerville, it's even a little lower, sixty-six percent affordability ratio here in Somerville. And what that means is with homes, the median home price this year in Somerville is five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The median household income is a hundred and five thousand dollars. So homes in Somerville are selling for nearly six times one year of income, and, and only two out of three people living here can afford those prices. And so that's another reason why we expect to see a slowdown. Here, you can see that home prices in Somerville through September thirtieth of this year, trailing twelve-month period, have risen by twelve and a half percent. That's compared to five percent for the rest of the state. So Somerville is outperforming the state of New Jersey. But even here, we start to see some indicators, for example, back, I'm sorry, it'll be on the next slide. Back at the beginning of the year, there was one buyer for every one seller, and today there is, there are, there are, there are two sellers for every one buyer, and so the market is softening, and that's why we think that home prices will rise a lot slower. I just want to dip my toes a little bit into what's happening in investment property, and what we're going to look at here tonight is what's happening in the apartment market, locally here in Somerville, what's happening with the office building market, and what's happening in the retail market. Take, we'll start with, we'll start with what's going on here in the multifamily market. And I know there's, it's hard to sort of pick this up, but on the left side of the screen is Somerset County, and on the right side of the screen is Somerville. And, you know, the vacancy rates are rising across Somerset County and falling here in Somerville. And what that means is that tenants, households who are looking for a place to rent apartment, are finding Somerville to, to be a, a first choice, a most desirable place to locate. And when we look at rents, the rents in Somerville are virtually identical to what they are in Somerset County on an average basis. That would not have been true ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, or twenty years ago, but it is true today. And so the, the, the market for apartment development here in Somerville continues to be very strong in the present tense. When we take a look at what's going on in the office market, once again, Somerville is outperforming, outperforming Somerset County. The availability rate in Somerset County, which is the percentage of office space which is looking for a tenant to occupy it, is at about twenty percent, and in Somerville, it's less than two percent. That's outstanding. It is the lowest office vacancy rate in the state. Now, to be fair, there hasn't been a lot of it that's been constructed in recent years. It doesn't have the volume of office space that would exist, let's say, in Bridgewater, so it's a smaller universe. But it's performing extremely well, and it, the, the space that is available is being filled, while the, while the amount of vacant space in Somerset County is increasing. So once again, a very good performance metric for office space. I want to talk next about retail, because retail is such a critical component to your economic and real estate landscape here in Somerville. Retail has been the big surprise in real estate markets over the last five years. Many were expecting that demand for retail space would collapse with the e-commerce shopping model that had become so prevalent and continues to grow in scope today. And the expectation five years ago that many were forecasting, which was that retail space would need to be vacated, it would need to be torn down, it would need to be redeveloped into something else, that did not happen. And the reason it did not happen is that the tenancy, the tenant mix in retail space has changed dramatically over the last five to ten years. Ten years ago, and even five years ago, retail spaces were filled with retailers selling physical goods, and those are the things that can be acquired alternatively from the internet, without needing to go out and shop. And what we've seen today is that retail tenancy has been curated, recurated, to include services and food and restaurants, and certainly, that's something that you understand very well here in Somerville, with the number of restaurants per capita being at the top of the list here in New Jersey. And so the retail landscape has changed. I do want to make you aware of the next change that's coming, though. And the next change that's coming is that here in New Jersey, liquor consumption is the, and, in New Jersey and in the United States, liquor, liquor consumption is at an eighty-six-year low. Young people don't drink. Now, understand, as I told you earlier, young households are the driver of your, of everyone's economic engine. They determine whether or not a redevelopment plan is successful or not. Young people just don't drink anymore. The effects of this are far-reaching. They are now tearing out vineyards in California and replacing them with ordinary agricultural crops, because the market has collapsed. What this means is that going forward, restaurants with liquor licenses will be less important to your economic future than they have in the past. Part of this is a lifestyle choice, part of this is an economic choice, part of this is a health choice, part of this is cannabis, which is an alternative to alcohol consumption. And then another part of this are some of the drugs, which are being taken for weight loss, which not only eliminate your desire for food, but your desire for alcohol. So this will be something to think about going forward, that restaurants with liquor licenses will be less successful and less important, and eateries offering interesting, eclectic, ethnic types of foods will become more and more important, and that's something that you already understand here, because you have that landscape here today, and so we should take a look at that. When we take a look at the retail market, in Somerset County, vacancy is at five percent, in Somerville, it's only three percent. That's quite impressive. And so the retail is a vibrant part of Somerville's desirability, and I must say, watching what you do here in Somerville to promote your downtown retail businesses is exemplary, is a model that many should follow, and my, my, my advice to you would be to stay on that, continue to do that, because they are the lifeblood. We're going to move next into a little bit of a forecast, just to take a look at what we think is going to happen here. Wall Street is ecstatic with what's going on in the country, and they feel that businesses are going to be wildly profitable in the near future, and that's why stock prices go up. Stock prices go up because investors say, I think that company is going to make more money and be more profitable, and I want to buy a stake in that. Consumers are feeling very pessimistic. They're feeling very challenged, and that challenge largely has to do with high costs, high grocery costs. Sure, gasoline prices have come down a little bit, but they're still awfully expensive. Grocery prices aren't going up as fast as they were, but they haven't come down. Consumers are very sensitive to affordability, and that's concerning to New Jersey, because we are one of the two or three least affordable places to be. And so we're going to need to spend some time here. You can't do it at the, at, at the municipal level, but we do need some policymaking to start to address this at the state level. This very low consumer confidence portends that there's going to be quite a shakeup in the midterm elections next year, because that's what drives election results. In terms of what's likely to play out here going forward, a recession, an inflation spike is highly unlikely, and a recession is not impossible, because we certainly live in stressful, unpredictable times, perhaps like never before, but neither of those is the base-case expectation, meaning that inflation will spike and interest rates will go up, or that we'll see a recession, not very likely. And what is likely is that we'll see steady declines in interest rates, which will be generally beneficial to real estate markets. In the housing market, we expect that the number of houses selling will increase significantly, that buying demand will rise, and that rental demand will be sustainable in the near term. There's really no risk of a collapse in the rental market. As I said earlier, there is concern at a statewide level that the trends with outbound migration and the trends with the decline in the number of twenty-year-olds and thirty-year-olds will have negative repercussions on apartment demand. But Somerville so far is outpacing what's happening at the state level, and you do have the ability to continue to do that. My message there, there is, you're, you're well done, but your work is not done. There's more to do here in terms of planning for Somerville's future vibrancy. In terms of what we see in the future for housing, you know, costs and taxes and affordability are an issue here, and that's why the overwhelming majority of apartment projects being constructed seek financial agreements with pilots and abatements and things of that nature. That's not likely to change. If we go from the start of the pandemic to today, rents are up by thirty percent, but the cost of construction is up by forty percent, and pilots are one of the ways to bridge that gap. And so these are long-term trends that are not likely to go away. The Supreme Court took a very strong stance on mandating and encouraging towns to build affordable housing, and the principal way that that affordable housing has been constructed is inside of inclusionary projects, which means that if you, if you intend to build one hundred affordable housing units, you need to build five hundred units in order to get your twenty percent set aside to create your thousand units. And in some towns, it's around three quota of a thousand affordable housing units, which means that some suburban towns have had to figure out a way to permit five thousand rental apartments. We need more diversification in the landscape of how we create affordable housing, because if the only way that's going to happen is by overbuilding apartment markets, it's going to have adverse repercussions. Now, that's an, that's a comment that's, that's intended more for suburban towns, drivable suburban towns, and less so for commutable towns with vibrant downtown districts, but I fear that we're getting too much on that in most suburban places. Demographics, we've talked about. Placemaking certainly matters, you understand that well. We expect that home prices will drift slightly higher and likely start to decline in a few years, not because of some fundamental crisis, but just because home prices have gone up more than salaries. And in history, every time that's happened, there has been a trimming back that eventually occurred, so that house prices matched what people can afford and banks are willing to lend. And so we do think that that's going to happen, not now, not next year, probably not the year after, but sometime within the next five years. The last thing I want to say is that we are all watching the politics play out in New York City. I take a, I, I, I draw a very bold line that I don't engage in political talk in these types of conversations. So what I say next is not intended to say somebody's right and somebody's wrong, or someone has a better concept or a better, better, better idea of how to run things or than another. But I will tell you that you, our economy in New Jersey, and Somerville's economy, and real estate landscape in New Jersey, is joined at the hip with what's going on in New York City. And if we were to reach a point, and what's said in political campaigns usually is not what actually plays out in terms of policy. That's not the way it turned out this time in the most recent presidential election, but usually, things that are said are just talk and don't actually become policy. But we do need to watch what's going on in New York City, because if large employers were to make the decision that they no longer want to be located there, there would be a drop in real estate values and real estate demand all across the northern half of New Jersey, and it would arrive here on the train lines. So it is something for us to keep a careful watch on. Couple of just quick wrap-ups here in terms of some projections. We think that unemployment continues to drift higher. Here in New Jersey today, we have one of the highest unemployment rates in the country at five percent, and we expect it to start to get up to five and a half, five point six, five point seven by the end of next year. That's not because we're doing a bad job here, it's because the Federal Reserve is attempting to cause that to, to happen, and because New Jersey is a high-cost state, we're a bit more on a tightrope than other places might be. And nationally, we expect for that to rise as well, but nothing that would be alarming. Unemployment rates in the five to six percent range are not a crisis. They're higher than they were, but over the long term, they're certainly sustainable, and they don't cause how, real estate corrections. We expect that thirty-year fixed-rate mortgages will decline from six point three percent today, down to five percent by the end of next year. That puts us in a more normal range historically, and it will bring with it a significant improvement in housing, home purchase affordability. In the housing market, we expect that the number of houses selling will rise, and that home price increases will slow. We've talked about that. And in the investment property markets, we see nothing but blue skies going forward over the next several years. This would include apartment properties and office buildings, retail space, and, and to a large extent, industrial warehousing as well, which is less of a factor here in downtown Somerville. But we expect that the investment property markets are going to perform quite well, that value appreciation will accelerate, that rents will go higher, and that trading volume will improve. Those are the prepared comments that I brought, and I would love any questions that you might have for me. Counsel? Andrew?
Certainly, my concerns also center around apartments versus condominium complexes and townhouses. You, you really didn't say much about that, but I think there's a senior market that's looking to stay in homeownership, that might appreciate townhomes and condominiums as opposed to apartments. I also think it's a, a good first home for, for young people who want more value in, in their appreciation in their dollar. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I do. So I agree with you completely. That was that housing diversification that I talked about, that the new product we build should be, occur in multiple sectors rather than any one sector. Condominium development, and by condominium, I'm talking about a building that looks like apartment flats, but they're owned. It's a, it's difficult to make that type of a project work here in New Jersey for a wide range of reasons. And so condominium flats to be built and purchased are, are probably not going to be viable. They're not viable today, and, or in most cases are not viable, and they're going to be difficult going forward. There's a whole lot of reasons. There's a lot of trouble with getting insurance policies for those. Banks are very reluctant to lend on those. The transition period where you transition control of the homeownership association from the builder to the homeowners is problematic, chaotic, and very expensive. And so it's my view that in that style of housing, layered flats, that apartments are really the better choice there. Having said that, inside of apartments, there is a significant opportunity for senior-targeted apartments, apartments which are limited to occupancy by households which are 55 years and older. And because fewer retirees are wanting to leave New Jersey, and because Somerville offers a lifestyle which is not reproducible in very many other places, that becomes a, a, a housing component that would be worth considering. Now, apartments that are built for senior households need to have different design characteristics, right? The apartment size would generally need to be larger than you would build in an all age. So instead of a one-bedroom apartment being 700 or 800 square feet, it needs to be larger in size. And the amenity package would be different, and the fit and finish, the quality of construction, in many cases, isn't quite as elaborate. But that is a very interesting component, and Somerville has the lifestyle here that would be attractive there. Townhouse development is, that can be either the first step, the first rung on the ladder, to be able to enter into homeownership, or it can be the step-down to the, to the bottom rung again for households who've raised their families and they no longer need a yard and three or four bedrooms and would like to move into something that's, that's a little less maintenance, perhaps less cost, and offers them accessibility, which of course you have here. So that would be certainly something that will become increasingly viable as interest rates start to come down. I agree with you, there, there should be more diversification.
So in the regards to the liquor consumption and the, and the decrease in that, as far as a future forecast, what, I know that you praise some of the things that we're already doing now, but in addition to what we're doing now, what else could we be doing in that front as far as being perhaps more specific about the types of businesses to encourage?
I would need to review your, your current zoning and your redevelopment plan to, to understand what the particulars are there. But, but the, the goal, the objective here would be to increase that presence, non-liquor-licensed restaurants, and you already have your, more than your fair share of those. The goal would be to, to increase that. They're more affordable to, to build, to occupy, to create. There's not that liquor-licensed element that's involved. The insurances are less. And, but I can't give you specifics without taking a look at your redevelopment.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was just curious if there was a way to connect that to the encouraging some of those younger people to be here as well, if there was something specific that might harness them?
Glenn? There is a, a new trend of liquor stores that only sell zero-proof alcohols and, and things like that. So if you, if, going along with that trend, if you wanted to attract those non-drinkers, encouraging one of those businesses to open, there's a successful one right now in Chester, New York, or in New Jersey. Excuse me. No, I, I don't have any questions. It was a very thorough presentation. I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I just want to piggyback on one of the questions I know that, that Glenn was asking. As far as placemaking, you know, you, you put a lot of emphasis on that. What, what do we find the most successful placemaking to be? As far as what, what drives desire? That scenario is, you highlighted that we need to continue on. We talked a little bit about, obviously, non-alcoholic, but what are, what are things that drive people to come and, and want to spend time in, in a location?
The key ingredient is to have a synergy between the different types of retail uses that are in place. And so certainly food is one of them, but services are very important as well, from spas and day spas, which go beyond a nail salon or a hair salon and offer that sort of immersive experience. It's those types of uses which make Somerville a destination to come to. And while you're there, coming into a day spa, for example, to be able to spend an hour before and an hour after, a reason to come early and stay late, which is generally the, the mantra for successful downtown redevelopments, is to be able to have that synergy, a wide range of use types.
Okay. Since we, we have this on the table and it's a discussion item, obviously, we've, we've had our opportunity to say something. But at this time, as long as the counsel is amenable, I'd like to open it up. If the public has any questions for our presenter or, or comments that they'd like to put, please come up to the microphone, your name and address, and we'll, we'll have a little bit of discussion time. Do I need to, motion open, or we should just open? Open to the public!
Thank you. I, I do have a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're, you're part of this?
Figured, you know, as folks kind of, by, by the way, I found it very excellent information. I know this certainly with the downtown Somerville Alliance and, and the team there, that this information is going to be very helpful as we move forward. The, the one question I had is, is, you know, I have two children. They're both in their twenties. And one of them lives at home with May. The other one works from home here in Somerset Development. Where do you see the work-from-home correlation with the, I guess, with the investment? I saw your investment property. You felt that there was going to be some gains there, some positive reactions. And, and for the most part, you know, my, my, my older son never goes to work. He works, but doesn't go to work. And, and so I was wondering what your vision is on that as to whether that's going to affect, you know, I, I think he pays high rents, but that's his office, his, and his bedroom, and, and his place he lives and entertains and so forth. So I was wondering your thoughts on that?
The, the, the combination of the pandemic and technology advances caused a pendulum swing where pre-pandemic, fewer than 20% of all service workers were working from home. To, with the pandemic, it went to 98%, 95%, 90%, but that number continues to swing lower. In large part, employers have allowed it because they felt that they didn't have enough leverage to demand otherwise. That is rapidly changing. Employers have found, for the most part, that employees who are working remotely are less productive and more difficult to manage. And so we see companies across the spectrum shift from asking to suggesting to demanding that their workforce physically report to work. And that unemployment is going higher, and that hiring is slowing is going to give those employers the leverage to be able to say, as many companies have from large financial houses in Manhattan to IBM, which told its employees five months ago, either move closer and come to the office or look for another job. And so that's the trend that we're seeing happen here, and that's likely to continue. When it's all said and done, though, we will continue to have a higher proportion of workers working remotely who never go into the office than we had previously. Today, the office utilization ratio, the percentage of workers who physically go into the office has risen from less than 5% to nearly 70%. And we expect that to continue to drift a little higher. And so with that, you know, on the one hand, on the one hand, your apartment space becomes more single-purpose. It's for your leisure and personal use rather than a place to work. Although I will say that most of the buildings that have been constructed have a space for people to be able to collect in a common area, to be able to function as a work or a co-working space. But we're, we're seeing that shift. And so what will happen is that the, the work-from-home will, will decline, but then the reliance on transit will increase. And so there'll be, there'll be, it'll be a flip. And here, in a place like Somerville with the connections that you have, it won't be, it won't be a negative, provided that employers continue to be located in New York City.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the public? Questions, comments?
Just a quick question. Is the PowerPoint going to be available to people later, or just streaming watching?
That's for you to decide.
Yeah, we can make that available. Anyone else? Just come up and first the microphone?
Hi, my name is Christina Duncan for East Cliff Street, Somerville. Amazing presentation, thank you. So I have a twofold question. You were mentioning about condominiums, like the flats, why they're a bad idea. I think I have an idea. I'm assuming because of the collapse in Florida and everything that's occurred since then, we are actually having a lot of trouble right now with condominiums. So I just wanted to kind of get your take and understanding with current condominiums that are built, for-sale condos, what you're seeing and what you predict in the future. Specifically also, our coastal community here in New Jersey, Monmouth Ocean County, what you're seeing is going to happen there.
And for the coastal communities, just so I understand, specific condominiums or just in general?
Either. I guess either would be great.
Yeah, so while the construction of new condominium flats is very challenging and not likely to happen in significant numbers, it'll happen here and there. And where we see it happening, for the most part, is in very high-value markets where income and housing costs are so expensive. So you'll see a lot of it in Jersey City.
Right.
But instead of, you know, costing $3, $2, $2.50 to $3, to $2.50 cents to $3 a square foot to rent an apartment here, there it's going to cost $4, $5, or $6 a square foot. And so purchase starts to make sense financially. We've seen some of it in Morristown, where, which has a higher price point, and it's actually another market that's done quite well with its redevelopment initiatives. So while we're not likely to see very much of that, the existing condominium housing should perform at par with the rest of the housing market. Now, certainly, there is the maintenance fee issue. And in Florida, because of what you referred to, the collapse of, in Surfside of a building with loss of life because it wasn't fully maintained, there we're actually seeing that condominium values are declining. And the reason is that the state has taken a very aggressive stance in terms of setting aside reserves and having the appropriate engineering inspections. And so in a condominium building, let's say you have a unit which is 1,000 square feet in Florida, five years ago, your maintenance cost was around $600 a month, and today it's $1,300 a month, right? And so that starts to subtract from value. But to the extent that an existing condominium is being well-managed, that it has adequately funded reserves, and that it doesn't have major structural problems, the, the investment value there will continue to be strong.
Okay, so with the new ones, we wouldn't do the new ones just because of value? Is that kind of the theory behind it, like the ones in Somerville? Like if they wanted to do for-sale condos?
Are you saying if, in fact, that were to happen in the future?
Yeah, like if some, I know personally of some investors that are thinking about it.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why I'm asking.
Yeah. I mean, certainly you could see it in Somerville because it has a lot of the right ingredients. But financially, it's a better outcome to build that same building as a rental property than as a condominium building, in most cases. Now, circumstances can vary from one project to another. But generally speaking, it's, 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 it is more profitable to build that as a rental property.
So from a profitability standpoint?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my last question was multi-generational households. What are we seeing? Because in terms of, and what are we predicting in the future for multi-generational households?
15 years ago, it was a non, it was an insignificant part of housing demand. And now what we're, what we're talking about is no longer rental housing, but for the most part, single-family housing or two-to-four-family housing. Today, it's become a, a significant part of the, of the housing landscape. And there are varying reasons for that. One of the reasons is that elderly parents who moved to Florida in their 60s and 70s and can no longer care for themselves are finding that it's necessary to come back and be closer to family members to provide them with support as an alternative to, let's say, going into an assisted-living facility. So there's that. The aging of the baby boomers, which is relentless and unforgiving. Another part of this is that because New Jersey has a significantly higher proportion of foreign-born households, many of those foreign-born households have different values that place a very high value on elderly generations and wanting them to be in the same home. And so this multi-generational housing has become quite popular. And it's increased from what was 2% or 3% of the housing market demand up to 10% to 15% of the market demand. Now, some communities, some municipalities have opted to incorporate that into their zoning to allow an auxiliary housing unit, oftentimes on a lower level or in a basement, to be, which, which would be compliant with zoning in order to allow for that. It's become a very big part, well, not a very big part. It's become a larger part of housing demand going forward, and we expect for that to continue. It's, there's also an affordability issue to that. When you can group multiple generations, children, parents, and grandchildren under a single roof, you're able to pool resources and be able to better afford the cost of living. So it, it is a growing part of the housing market.
Do you think that's an opportunity here?
It, it is a very, it is a very tricky field to navigate because it can end up with unintended consequences, right? In terms of taking a single-family neighborhood of homes and, and then introducing permitted apartments inside of a single-family zone. So it's not an easy thing to regulate. It is certainly worth considering.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. That was very insightful. I want to thank the members of the public for coming out this evening. I want to thank the members of our different boards that are here. Planning Board, we've got Environmental, I see, Zoning. Thank you very much for coming out and listening this evening. And we look forward to having some wonderful discussions based upon the information we received tonight. Thank you. All right, moving on to our committee reports.
Thank you. I don't have much to share, but I am excited to let everyone know that the Somerville Public Library, as of today, is open, the entire first floor. So... So they welcome the public to please come and take a tour of the, how everything's situated now, and start going back to the library. And then the Public Safety Committee will be meeting next Thursday, October 16th, at 6:00 PM here at the Civic Center. If you have any concerns in your neighborhood or what's going on in town as far as safety, please come and let us hear about it. Thank you.
Ready?
Thank you, Council President. Curbside Lee pickup starts Monday, October 27th. We ask, please, that you place either in paper bags or at the curb. You can also call 908-704-7195 to schedule a pickup. On September 26th, I was proud to join the Borough of Somerville to honor our dedicated employees at the First Annual Employee Appreciation Luncheon. From our administrative staff, the Public Works, Police, Recreation, Fire, and every department in between, this was a joyous moment to recognize the people who keep Somerville running every single day. Their commitment, teamwork, and pride in serving our community are what makes Somerville the town we all love. Thank you to every Borough employee for your continued service and dedication from all of us who sit here. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Start me. All right, got a report from the Historic Advisory Committee. We met this month to talk about a few different efforts that are going on, a couple good things to report that have been in the works. Somerset County's Journey Through the Past event, which is this weekend, includes our Borough Hall and the, you know, Historic Advisory has worked with folks in the school district in order to put together like some cutouts so that people can take pictures and kind of historic look over by the Borough Hall. So that'll be happening, and I hope everybody joins. We want to congratulate St. John's on their 175th anniversary of being around. The Historic Advisory Committee is going to be scanning in a lot of the documents that we've collected so that there's a digital copy of it, so that'll be happening soon. Also happening soon is an event for Paul Robeson at St. John's on the 17th and 19th. And then our plaque project is done. I believe that it's been posted or will be or something, but we've identified all the plaques and historical locations around town, and it's on a map, and they've done tremendous amount of effort in order to put that together, so I thank them. And that'll be able to be shared with everybody soon, so please enjoy walking around Somerville, checking out the historic sites this weekend, and at your leisure.
Thank you. Gina?
On behalf of the Somerville Rescue Squad as liaison, I report that they had 140 calls in September. They had, have been working on volunteer training, continuing their required training. And also, yesterday, they had a presence at the street fair recruiting and promoting their services. So kudos to them. As liaison to the Board of Health, the Board of Health met on September 17th. They reviewed various inspection and health department programming, and they also discussed future community events. There is also a lead screening program for children coming up on October 14th. So with many old homes in Somerville, it may be something important to look into whether you're a homeowner or a landlord. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
Great, thank you so much. Fire, the fire department's been very busy. I'll have a number of things to report here. We had 13 fire department members, three of which were also on the rescue squad tech, or the tech rescue team, that participated in swift water training and boat operations and tech classes and survived and did well. Right, Roger? Also, there were 33 calls in September, or different alarms. The fires ranged from things from trash to electrical to building fires and gas leaks and some elevator rescues. We are anxiously awaiting our newest apparatus. Ladder 57 is lettered and waiting. We're hoping to take possession soon and start mounting tools. Hopefully, maybe we'll have it just in time for Inspection Day so that we can check out this equipment and its functionality and the way it can support our town. And speaking of Inspection Day, this Saturday, the 11th, is Inspection Day for the Fire Department. This ceremony has been going on, it's a tradition that goes all the way back to October 29th, 1909. So please join us at Borough Hall at 3:30 on Saturday, and then we will parade down Main Street to the east. So come one, come all to that. And speaking of things to mark in your calendar, not too soon to think about the Lights Parade as well. So December 6th at 6, the Lights Parade should kick off, and as it gets dark, we spread joy and light around the whole town, and you'll, more to come on that and the parade route later on. So Fire Department's very busy. And then for our environmental, we will be meeting next Tuesday. There was some confusion perhaps, it's not tomorrow, it will be Tuesday, the 14th, I believe, right? Yeah, the 14th, right here at 7 o'clock. But we did have other things that have been going on, it's been busy there as well. So the Environmental Commission looks forward to working with the Planning Board on the tree replacement ordinance and the enhanced stormwater ordinance so that we can meet all our state requirements, explain all of the proposed exemptions, and then also make sure that people's rights and properties are respected and protected. So look forward to that with the Planning Board. Also, I'm just going to change to my area, we have, we're working with Vanderweer School tomorrow. There'll be planting and educational events led by Rebecca, Jerry, and John. They're putting it all together with a grant and plant, doing some planting and raised beds at Vanderweer. Also, the Environmental Commission also had a presence at the street fair and talked to many different people, signed up people for newsletters, and educated them on different environmental issues for the town, including having some electric vehicles and answering questions about that, and handing out things to support our PSENG grant and getting energy home, energy assessments. Just a couple more. The Somerset County is running an online survey that runs until October 31st, requesting input on the public about electric vehicle infrastructure. So you can find that on the county website or go to www.surveymonkey.com/r/sumersetEV. And then also, before Inspection Day, on the 11th, the Environmental Commission is looking for some volunteers to help with the Peters Brook Restoration Project at 9:00 AM that is located right behind Van Fleet Gardens at the corner of North Bridge and William Street. You can find sign-ups on Facebook and Instagram pages for the, for the Somerville Environmental Commission or through the Borough website. If you come, please bring some tools and help us plant some plants to restore that brook. And as I said, the next meeting will be in just about a week. So lots of good stuff. Thank you.
I hope so. I turned my microphone on. This past Sunday, the Recreation Committee held their senior luncheon at the American Legion. It was a fantastic turnout. We thank everyone for coming out and joining us. Big, big thank you to the Rec Commission for putting this together, and to the Troop 83, we had some scouts show up, and they were, they were the servers, they did an absolutely fantastic job, they had smiles on their faces the entire time, and it's great to see volunteerism in the borough. As I said to the folks that attended that day, the borough functions better with volunteers. It's the volunteers that make us, you know, obviously we have the staff here during the day, but all of the other things that happen outside of the regular workday that the volunteers take on, it is immeasurable. So thank you for being volunteers, thanks to the scouts for coming out, and we look forward to, you know, using their services as they become members of the community in their later teenage years and adult years, and hopefully joining some of these organizations that we have. A few things from Recreation. The house decorating contest, decorate your house no later than Sunday, October 26th, in an autumn or Halloween style. A variety of prizes will be awarded, and a map of the participating houses will be shared via social media so that the community can enjoy. Registration is free, but the deadline to enter is Tuesday, October 21st. That's, you can register on our Recreation website. Some winter programs coming up, we have the Basketball League, grades three through eight. The deadline is November 5th to register. And there's a Beginning Basketball Clinic Friday nights in the month of January and February at Vanderweer, from 6:00 to 7:00 for grades one and two. The deadline to, to sign up for that is December 30th. The Somerville Spooktacular will be held on Thursday, October 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. There'll be free family fun for kids of all ages along Main Street, Division Street, and on the County Courthouse lawn, sponsored by the Downtown Somerville Alliance. The 10th Annual Somerville 5K Turkey Trot will be held, obviously, on Thanksgiving morning, November 27th, at 9:00 AM. Again, you can register at somervilleturkeytrot.com. I will be there, I will not be running. That is for my son to do, he's fantastic at it. The only time I run is when I'm being chased, and it's not even that fast. Please follow the Somerville Recreation on social media, and again, we have the Community Pass set up, so you can check that out online. It's communitypass.net/summerville for all of our programs. So with that, I know we've had quite a verbose evening this evening, hopefully you've gotten a lot out of it, but I would like a motion to open our meeting to the public this evening. Someone? Second. Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Verne? All right, meeting is open to the public. Please approach the microphone, name and address for the public, and direct your comments to me. Thank you.
Hello. Oh, this one. Okay. Hello. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Kristen. I live at 23 Vanderweer Avenue, Kristen Geller. So I moved here in 2019. I do have some pictures, can I just give them to you guys now? Can see them?
Thank you.
So anyway, I moved to Somerville in 2019, I bought my house, and I fell in love with the town right away. But it was missing something because I grew up in the middle of nowhere, in the woods. So it was missing some trees. So I planted almost immediately some twin cherry trees on the street, and we paid about $1,000 for them, but they were worth every penny. I look at them every day as I eat my breakfast, and they bloom, they're the first to bloom on the street, and they bloom in the fall as well. But unfortunately, on September 16th of this month, or last month, I came home and found that they were like disfigured by the DPW. My neighbor told me that someone had come and used a chainsaw on them, and these are not big trees, they're not big. They were not in the road my mom parks in front of my house all the time, and I live on a very quiet street, too. It's not like big trucks come through. So they were cut, one of them, I would say almost 50% of its canopy is lost. They cut it literally straight down to the trunk, so it is now behind the curb. And the other one is probably like 33, 5%. And so I looked it up, taking off more than 30% of a tree's canopy is destructive to the tree. And I know that this was not a single event because last year, my neighbor on Eastern Avenue, she lives on the corner of Eastern and Union, she had the same issue where her trees were cut in half as well. So when this happened to me, I took a walk up Union to try to make myself feel better and see if the trees had come back. Some of them had. They look awful because they're disfigured, but unfortunately, two and a half of them, I say half because one is dying, are dead. And these are, they don't look mature, like they're, they're young trees. So I'm here to voice my concern that perhaps the DPW, you know, I'm sure they're great, but I'm not trying to get anyone fired, but I'm wondering if they have some kind of way that they train their employees? Because residents and the Environmental Commission, the town's money is put towards these trees, and if we're mutilating them and killing them, you know, that's a waste of money, and it's not good for the town's environment as well. So I'm hoping that this brings awareness to that, and maybe there can be some better communication or like an arborist on board with them. Additionally, I wanted to know if there was any recourse for if these trees die, like some of them have, will they be replaced? And I went on the website, the Somerville website, to see if there was any kind of ordinance in place or anything about like the replacement of trees. I didn't come anything, come across anything that was helpful for my situation, but I did come across something that I handed to you. There was an ordinance in 2015 that was made that allocated that, the redevelopment zone areas, the only trees that could be planted there are Japanese lilac trees. So that sort of makes sense because I've seen them popping up all over town. They are not native and they're dying. I mean, even just driving in here, when you leave, there's like five of them on the drive out. So I just wanted to bring attention to that ordinance because I think maybe it should be reconsidered with an arborist or somebody that knows more about trees than I do, but they're not doing well, and that should certainly not be what we're replacing the honey locusts or any, any trees with in town. So thank you for your time, that's all I have, and I really appreciate every single one of you for what you do. I know it's not an easy job. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Just a question. When we start to talk about the different ordinances, like a come up?
I'm sorry, Larry.
No, no, it's all right. Wait. When we start to talk, Larry Cleveland, 34 Grant Avenue, there's an ordinance for introduction about pilot application. Will the public be open to talk about it at that point?
Yes, sir.
I'll be back.
Okay. Look forward to it.
Yes.
Please.
Hello, Scott Gibbs, 3 Prospect Street. I'm up here about the zoning, spot zoning that Bridgewater Township put upon the border of Colonial Avenue in Somerville, that's my neighborhood. I'm a little late to the game, but I don't know, did we, did we discuss it? I got a notification that we're going to discuss it tonight.
So that's, if for our meeting, we're not discussing, we haven't seen, the borough hasn't seen any plans for that, that location. Obviously, we've seen it in the newspaper, but there's been nothing that has come to the borough as far as the plan goes.
Have we retained counsel to represent the interests of the borough?
What I'll tell you right now, this, at this time, right now, this is public comment, so I can, I can answer questions afterwards, but if you have comments, I'll answer them, but we, there's no back-and-forth questions right now.
Okay, so my comment is, it borders a highly residential zone, and it provides access. There was no notification. I've lived in the area for five years. To my knowledge, my neighbors and any of us, none of us were notified, which was also, it was cited at Bridgewater Township's council meeting, and I just, you know, generally, it's pretty, pretty nasty and rude for the way it came down. So I would like to, in general, to have, you know, the borough represent us in this, in this issue because it's just a raw deal, pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, or, sorry, any other comments from the audience?
Hello, Jeff Kaiser, 23 Vanderweer Avenue, Somerville. So I'm the, I'm also the Vice Chair of the Environmental Commission, and I've got a few of our commission members here as well. And I just wanted to say that, you know, since the last meeting, both the tree removal and replacement ordinance and the stormwater management ordinance are going to be going through the Planning Board, so I encourage everybody to, you know, look to those meetings and, you know, watch on YouTube or live in person. However, the Commission has received a few questions about the tree removal and replacement ordinance that, specifically, that I wanted to, you know, clarify a few things, top level. And one thing is that I think was being missed is the fact that New Jersey, the state, issued regulations, new regulations, that would require every municipality to adopt tree removal and replacement guidelines in their current ordinances or put a new one in. This would require everybody to obtain a permit to remove a tree and then replace it with a smaller, much smaller, much smaller caliber tree in lieu of payment to the town. They could either replace it in their property or on a place in the borough. Everybody, every town in our area has started to adopt these ordinances. This law came to effect in 2023, and we're supposed to adopt it in 2024. Towns in the area have already adopted this. We're not alone in adopting this, these new regulations on replacement, removal and replacement. One thing I'll say is that the- One thing I'll say is that the size of the tree, four inch diameter size, is actually not at the base level. It's not at the largest part of the tree. It's actually at the most narrowest part, the, what's called the diameter at breast height. So that, that type of tree actually can be 15 to 20 feet tall, if it's a maple tree. Those types of trees absorb hundreds and hundreds of gallons of water a year. And they could benefit the town stormwater management as well as erosion. The state started this based upon the inlet flood protection law, which changed many different things. And they included it in there so that it could prevent stormwater from getting much worse as the years go by. The other thing I wanted to mention is that something that's been, I think, a lot of questions about is that in this ordinance, there's a lot of exceptions. So for instance, if you have a tree that's destroying your foundation or a tree that's going to fall on your neighbor's house or your house or fall on someone else or dead or dying or blocking a sign, those trees are exempt from replacement and then also payment to the town. So that's something that I think people should be aware of, top level. And I think that, you know, this ordinance, the spirit of this is to keep the tree canopy intact so that as we develop in New Jersey and we, you know, we keep the amount of stormwater management, we keep New Jersey stable, basically, our tree can be stable. And other towns are doing that and I think it's a good thing that we do that as well. So I just wanted to bring those awareness things. So thank you very much for everything you guys do and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
John Hadley, 8 Lori Drive. I've noticed that all, most of the gradings downtown around the trees have been removed and it's just dirt. And I understand that there were issues with the bricks coming up, but I think actually it now looks a lot worse. And I heard something about a possible dog friendly initiative, you know, putting, perhaps putting AstroTurf around there, which I think would be a terrible idea. I mean, our grandson, you know, the first thing he likes to do when he's walking downtown is run, you know, go through all the dirt around those trees. And the idea that of, you know, dogs pooping and peeing there and, you know, unless you're going to have someone out every day hosing those down, it's going to be a very unattractive environment for everyone. So I'd just like to comment that I think something needs to be done to improve what's down there and not lose the trees as well because that adds a lot to the town to have those trees.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no, no other members of the public, a motion to close public session at this time? So moved.
Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right. Public session is closed. A few things, Kevin, the tree trimming that occurs, do we, was there any conversation about what happened on Vander Veer? Was that brought to DPW's attention?
I did bring it to the department's attention. I was told that the trees were trimmed to make way for the street sweeper. I expressed my concern about the lack of training for the person who pruned that tree. I did see the trees. It is not pruned to specifications. I also have obtained free, for free, a volunteer who will come and do a training in my discussion with DPW personnel. So I've also got them to agree not to prune any other trees until the training is addressed. So I'd like to think it's taken care of while we can't undo what has been done. I share your concerns. I also comment on the lilac trees downtown. Yes, I was on the Environmental Commission at the time when that ordinance went through. We gave them a wide variety of trees to select and for some reason, they chose that tree and that tree alone. And as we know, diversity is really important. You can't plant all one species of trees because you will lose all those trees. In addition to which, it is a dwarf sized tree put against five story buildings, which does not lend itself to the shade or the coin effect that we want or need. In addition to which, it's a flowering tree and that is not overly conducive to restaurants to have flowering trees in your food. So those are some issues that have come up. I also contend that a lot of them are dying because they have not been planted to specifications. And there are specifications. I think the problem is there's no monitoring of those specifications when the developers put those trees in. So those are, I think, factual comments and we need to do a better job.
Council president, I did engage Rutgers University on the tree trimming already. If you have, if there are three volunteers that are going to teach it, please let me know. I'll cancel that. Rutgers does offer the tree trimming course. I actually just took it. We're required to take it for credits. The plan was to put those employees that are actively engaged with that to, in that training course for Rutgers. It's a one day event, one day course, I'm sorry. It's minimum dollars. They're certified that in that. I spoke to the professor or the instructor, who's also doing another project for us now with the grant that we're working on. So I'd like to keep them engaged on that since they're going to be part of what we're doing in the future.
Kevin, if it's C U U courses, then definitely have them go through. And Tom Appenord, former Environmental Commission Chair, can supplement that training or be on site perhaps with some of them when they do it after they take the training? Is it in-person training or is it Zoom?
It's in-person.
Okay.
Yeah. They offer it on the campus. They, and obviously, so that'll work and if Tom wants to supplement that, that's great. And then I did speak to Rodney Hadley the day afterwards. I think you had brought it to my attention as well. And everything else, the councilwoman said about the street cleaner and the height was consistent with the information I received as well.
Okay. Certainly, we want to make sure that, you know, all activities cease until we have that taken care of and it sounds like that's the plan we're working on. So I appreciate that. In regards to as far as the plantings go, the planning board has been having multiple conversations about trees and the Environmental Commission, as those of you that are, the multitude of you that are in the office, audience right now know, has provided a list of trees of recommendations and those have been brought to the planning board as well. So there are ongoing conversations on how we can improve the diversity of trees in our developments and obviously throughout downtown. That's a conversation we've been having here as well. In regards to the AstroTurf and surrounding the trees, we asked downtown to come back to us with a little more clarification that has not happened as of yet. But the spirit of what I gleaned from the conversation was that it would not be a tree surround, that it would be in spots that are underutilized around downtown, not necessarily where you would be sitting and eating. Obviously, no one wants to have fecal matter close to their food. But it is certainly a conversation that has not come back up yet, but we have heard your comments, which is why it did not go anywhere in our last meeting and which is why we went back to downtown to get a little more clarification on that. The tree ordinance and the stormwater ordinance will be discussed at a later planning board meeting. They, the next planning board meeting is Wednesday. There's going to be a little discussion about when those discussions will transpire. So they will not be discussed in full at this Wednesday coming up, but there will be dates scheduled so that way the public is made aware and that you can be present when those discussions happen. So there will not be, there's a full agenda for this meeting coming up, but they, that will be scheduled with the members of the planning board on Wednesday. Cornell Boulevard, the place that is proposed or the area that is proposed for development, as I said before, the borough has not seen any plans for that. As a matter of fact, I think tonight, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, tonight, it's being discussed at Bridgewater's planning board. So that, that conversation that is occurring is happening there and not here. That is not one of our agenda items because again, the, this body has not gotten, got, received, I can't speak proper English this evening, has not received any plans for that. And when we do, we would most certainly send them to the planning board for their review and see what kind of impact that would have on the borough. Let's see here. The grates, the grates are being addressed along with the dog, as I said before, with the turf. So that is something that is also ongoing with downtown Somerville. And that's pretty much it. I think I got everything there. So thank you again for coming up and speaking. Again, talk about volunteers, having, having the ability to come up here and voice your comments. I know it's not a two-way discussion, but being able to hear your voice and being able to address your concerns. A lot of people think that it should happen online. That is not a clean way to do it. We'd like you to come here or if you can, you know, you can send an email and send it to the borough administrator or, like I said, come to our meetings and have your thoughts put out there and then we can address them and maybe even have a discussion after the meeting. So thank you very much for coming up and addressing us this evening. Moving on, we do have one ordinance for introduction. The mayor has made it his position this year that normally with our ordinances for introduction, there's not a time for public comment, but tonight there, we've made it, as I said before, that when we do introduce an ordinance, that there is a discussion. So before we introduce tonight's ordinance, I will open the floor for discussion. So please again, address your comments to me and approach the microphone, name and address. Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Cleveland, 34 Grant Avenue. I'm on the planning board and I'm on the environmental commission, but today, I'm here as a citizen because I think that the redevelopment committee should handle pilot issues way before you stick a shovel in the ground, way before it comes to the planning board. Because once it gets to us, it's too late at the planning board. We've lost the ability to work with the owners of the new property to do it the right way. Fairview Avenue, that was a mistake. I was the only person on the, on the planning board to vote no because we should have had that building pushed back. We could have worked with them. We tried and tried and tried. Got approved and now they're going to ask for a pilot after the fact? It's already constructed. The foundation's there. Where's our leverage? Where's our give and take? We have none. This is wrong to do it after the fact. It should be done ahead of time so that we all understand. Negotiate, do what you got to do, then it goes out to the rest of the world. Maybe it would have been the same event, the same thing would have happened, but what happened out there on Fairview Avenue was a mistake to all the neighbors there. Those people begged and pleaded to push that building back. They were going to get something. They wanted to push back. No, no, no. Now we're going to reward them with a pilot? I think that's a mistake. They should do that ahead of time. Work out your pilots ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved. Second.
Well, we don't do discussions on opening, so this is just an introduction and we'll do a real call.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts. Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right. Now we have an ordinance for public hearing and adoption. Actually, I didn't even read the last one. Let me read that into, into, into the minutes here, my apologies. Is that okay? I mean, we've. Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure everyone understands. We, obviously, you're here, but for the folks online, it was 2772, approving the pilot application and authorizing the mayor and borough clerk to execute a financial agreement by and between the borough of Somerville and Foundry Urban Renewal LLC pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 20 dash 1 et cetera for a property located at 100 Fairview Avenue, also known as lots 2.0 and 2.01 in block 50, as shown on the official tax map of the borough of Somerville, located in the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area. That was what we just voted on. I apologize for not saying it sooner. So now, the next one is for public hearing and adoption. This is number 2770, amending chapter 102, article 6, entitled "Permits and Enforcement", section 28, entitled "Building Permits, Certificates of Occupancy, Zoning Permits and Sign Permits, Specifically, Section B, Entitled "Zoning Permits, Subsections A and Subsections B to Subsection 2, Addressing Conversion of a Two-Family, Duplex, Multifamily or Professional Office in the R1, R2, POR Districts to a Single Family and Conversion of Group Homes to a Single Family or Two-Family Dwelling." Again, this motion right now is to open for public comment.
So moved. Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Public hearing is now open. Seeing none, closing public hearing. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right. Public hearing is closed. Now motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. I apologize, folks. When you get to do this only once in a while, you get a little rusty. All right. Next up is our consent resolutions. Are there any that council would like to pull?
Yes.
25, 1006, 270. And 265 above that.
Yeah, well.
Any others?
That was one, 265 is what I had.
Okay. Everybody else is good? Okay. So we'll go through the rest of them. 260 is approving the annual renewal of taxi driver licenses for 2526. 261 is approving, this might help, the fire department lights parade on December 6, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. at 170 East Main Street and road closure of Veterans Memorial Drive between Maine and Hamilton starting at 3:00 p.m. 262 approving change order number one with AS Hunter Municipal Services Incorporated for repair work to Claude Walk Park. Pool, excuse me. 263 amending resolution 25 dash 0616 dash 170, authorizing payment to Dennis Manning upon execution of release and amendment of the chief contract. 264 accepting a grant of $6,000 and approving chapter 159 for County of Somerset Department of Human Services for Somerville Youth Services Commission for the 2526 abbreviated annual grant for Girls on the Run, SMS Be Good Positive Behavior Support Raffles and Vander Buck's Intervention Program. 266 is approving the hiring of Mark Lukak as full-time laborer effective October 13th at a rate of 2250 per hour. 267 approving a bond release request for Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital Incorporated, known as block 1301, lots 1.02 for application as listed and our file is listed. 268 authorizing the sale of surplus property being auctioned, a auction lot of Cisco Voice Over IP telephones through municipal bid in accordance with state cooperative pricing system. 269 approving the hiring of Gabriel Hernandez as full-time laborer effective October 13th at a rate of 2250. 271 authorizing the mayor to execute a 2025 sub-grant agreement with Somerset County Community Development Block Grant Project for Carol Pager Park Ball Field Improvement Projects as listed and HUD grant as listed. 272 authorizing the borough of Somerville to apply for a supplemental grant from the hazardous discharge. from the hazardous discharge site remediation fund to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for the continuation of a remedial investigation of block one two seven lot one, the former Color Technology Property located at sixty Cornell Boulevard. Two seventy-three supporting an application for a supplemental H D S R F grant for the continuation of a remedial investigation at the former Color Tech site located at sixty Cornell Boulevard in the borough of Somerville. Two seventy-four approving right-of-way use to Pilot Fiber. Two seventy-five approving opioid funding for Challenge Day activity. Two seventy-six authorizing the acceptance of a grant for an outdoor fitness court as part of the National Fitness Campaign and authorizing the allocation of funds. Two seventy-seven approving a memorandum of understanding between the borough of Somerville and American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees. Two seventy-eight adjusting the hourly rate of James San Severino in accordance with memorandum of understanding between the borough of Somerville and A F S C M E N J. Two seventy-nine adjusting the hourly rate of Cody Schaefer in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between the borough and A F S C M E. Two eighty adjusting the hourly rate of Andrew Sprague in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between the borough of Somerville and A F S C M E. Two eighty-one supporting an application for a grant in the amount of one million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Somerset County Trails Grant Program for the design and construction of an elevated trail system on a portion of the landfill B D A redevelopment area located on route two oh six north in the borough of Somerville. Two eighty-two approving the hiring of Amy Moyer as full-time laborer effective October twentieth at a rate of twenty-two fifty per hour. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Okay. We have two sixty-five authorizing a contract with Millennium Communication Group Incorporated for a borough camera project at the Carol Pager Walk and Division Street as detailed in the proposal dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents as per proposal under the tips contract numbers as listed, available through the inter-local purchasing system. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what are the cameras ultimately going to be used for? Is this going to be like a target parking lot where we can tell people afterwards that their car was stolen? Or is this like a proactive item? How, how are we using this?
So the borough, a couple of years ago, committed to do about a hundred thousand dollars worth of cameras each year to tie into the police camera system. So basically, it'll provide security and obviously the camera itself. But they, they will be tied into the police system for all other cameras that we have in the municipality. So if there's a theft or, or, or other need to access that camera, they can.
And it'll be on, on the parks and on Division Street is the two places?
Yeah, so, so we do have some in, in, in park areas now. It'll be combined with those, but that's, yeah, Division Street, we had explored a temporary camera years ago. But the goal eventually is to put cameras everywhere, right? In, 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 in all the streets. We've made applications, bigger grant applications unsuccessfully, but this is the first application we're doing on Division. It, it's a, it's more of a plaza than, than a street. So it lends itself to the, to kind of doing that almost like we do a park.
Is the cameras at Exchange Field or Carol Pager Park just in the parking lot?
Well, actually, it hasn't been fully designed, but, but the goal is to capture the fields and, and the parking lot and, and the spacing.
So my comment.
We might have a need for a second camera there at a later date to cover any entire footage.
My, my comment would be there is the last vandalism we had there was on the playground where obscenities were chalk drawn on the surface of, of the playground. So that would be more my concern than the ball fields, but.
Thank you. The, the camera, and again, like I said, it's, it's to get, like, eventually we'll get that whole area.
And these aren't monitored, they're just look backs? Is that what you're saying?
From a security standpoint, I'd rather not answer that, but, but basically it is, it is captured on video. If the police department requires, decides to monitor, it would be. They would be connected to the same cameras we have in the police station, Borough Hall and elsewhere throughout the town.
Thanks, Kevin.
So if the police department decides to accept some type of support in their camera monitoring and have some type of technology on there that monitors facial recognition and tracks people in the park or on the Division Street or whatnot, that's because it's looped in, no matter where we put it, it would be in all videos, including these? I'm just concerned about generally privacy issues of having cameras on children playing and things like that.
The, those, these particular ones that we have are not facial recognition or anything like that. You know, they were, they were intended to provide security. I think most people, you know, appreciate the fact that the, the public spaces are monitored.
Any other comments, concerns? All right, roll call?
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
No.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Next is two seven zero awarding a six-month contract to Standard Building Maintenance for janitorial service at the emergency services facility located at eighty-five North Gaston Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So I'm concerned because a couple of months ago, we approved, I believe it was a seventy-five thousand dollar contract for another company. And I'm wondering why we're being asked to, to sign another contract for six months for additional dollars.
So I appreciate that question, councilwoman. The, the contract that the governing body had voted on and we executed was a not-for-profit service for challenged adults that, that are maintaining both Borough Hall and this building. We're not going to use that service for the police headquarters and fire. That building presents some logistical issues that require a, a, a professional cleaning service as the police department relocates into that space. So this is the company that, that, it's a professional cleaning service that, that'll be used there for six months. In that period of time, we'll assess the needs there and we will bid out this project specifically for that building only. Access is the other company that you were referring to, the nonprofit. They've been in place now a couple, eh, about a month, I guess. And they've worked out fairly well in the two locations that we felt would be appropriate.
Well, I'll just note that seventy-five plus, five thousand a month for, over five thousand a month for six months is over thirty thousand. Now we're spending a hundred and five thousand dollars for a year and a half of services and we could hire someone full-time for that kind of money or, or more. And I, I think when we get into budgeting for the next year, we really need to look at this in a more serious way and really evaluate the cleaning services as well.
Thank you. The, the healthcare costs, as you know, is, are the driving factor. At over fifty thousand dollars a year for a full-time employee, just on healthcare alone, and then the salary would lend itself to potentially one employee opposed to a company working. And if that person's out, the company still supplies that service. So, you know, I, I do appreciate that and that's something we can kind of talk about during the evaluation of next year's budget.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
No.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right, time for bills and vouchers. I make a motion in the amount, to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of nine hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Again, thank you all for coming out this evening and listening to a great presentation. You know, it's, it's wonderful to see more and more people coming out and, and being in the audience for our meetings again. Government works better when we work together. So with that being said, Andrew, a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.